Aloha mai kako, you are watching Hawaii Political Reporter.
You, as a free, beautiful, independent human being with inalienable rights, own yourself. As a result, you can do what you want with your own body and own the product of your labor. The implication is that it is morally wrong to initiate force against someone else or their property, because to do so is to violate their rights. Therefore, all human interactions should be free of force, fraud, and coercion, and people should be free to exercise their rights, limited only by respect for the rights of others. When you learned "don't hit" and "don't steal," it wasn't unless you work for the government. When you learned "thou shalt not kill," it wasn't unless your dear leader gives you a gun and a uniform and a one-way ticket to the other side of the world. Government is force, an opinion with a gun, and force is a poor substitute for persuasion. Governments frighten us into thinking we need them, but with knowledge, philosophy, and technology, we are empowering ourselves and each other to have the courage to move past the paradigm of statism and restrain government to only moral uses of force, at least until we replace it with the cooperative, free-market solutions that will soon render it obsolete.
Aloha mai kako, you are watching Hawaii Political Reporter.
Aloha, and thank you for watching Hawaii Political Reporter. Today, we have with us Cherish Almeida, running for Hawaii County Council District 5, and she's been so kind to come in and give us answers to our questions. And Cherish, please tell us a little bit about yourself.
Thank you for having me, Ross. I am a proud mother of four children. I have three grandchildren, the fourth one on the way. I've been married for 24 years to my husband, Melvin Almeida. We are both from the North Shore of Oahu, and we came here in 1993 to start a new life for ourselves and our family.
1993?
1993.
See, that's a good amount of time. You've seen a tremendous amount of change in this county.
Well, my concern is that I've seen change and in areas I've seen a lack of change. So that is a concern, and that is one of the reasons I decided to step forth and run for this office.
Okay, well, you know what? Tell us about that. I mean, I know also, I understand you've been to the university, and you were studying for early childhood education, and I know education's a big issue for you. You want to do better for our kids and, I guess, everybody cost-effectively maybe too. But go ahead, tell us some of those things you were talking about as far as what you've seen change and what hasn't changed.
Well, I've lived in Puna all of those 23 years. I started off in Mountain View on North Peck Road, and then recently, I'm in Pohua Town. And I see lack of infrastructure and lack of youth programs in our community. And our youth is the next generation. So when I went into early childhood education, I decided that we should start there. What I'm seeing is that there's a lot being done for that age group. We have Head Start, we have preschools now in our local schools. And then they go into elementary school, and they have all these sports after school. So they have PNR, park and recs, they come out with basketball, baseball, we have coach pitch, we have a few other, we have Pop Warner football. So there's things for the elementary student. Then we go into middle school, and all of those things get taken away. There's no after-school programs besides tutoring, and that's where we lose a disconnect with these kids. And I believe that that is where we need to implement programs so that these children don't get lost in the system, especially for families who are going through hardship at these times. These kids get caught up real young in alcohol and drug because that's what they see at home, and it's a huge concern for me. It's really close to my heart because I've seen it with my children. My oldest daughter is 24 years old, my youngest is 10. And I've seen all these children come through my house. I've seen these young adults who have no vision or no idea what they're going to do in the future, and that worries me because they are the future.
You know, Cherish, you're obviously touching on a very important subject, and it relates actually to exactly why I believe you're running and what is going on with our government. Because it's one thing for the kid himself to be lost, and it's another thing to have a society, okay, that is not providing the opportunities, okay? And that doesn't necessarily mean by the government doing something. In many cases, I believe it's the government not doing something, stepping out of the way and providing the overall situation. Now, you and I, off-camera, were talking a little bit about the economics, and I'm not going to get into that in depth here. But I would say, and I think a large part of my audience knows this, and if you don't, please look up the Federal Reserve and find out what's going on and follow it back. We have a system that is systematically sucking everything out from the bottom to the top, okay? And it's cutting the opportunities for the average person and making it more stressful for them. I mean, if the kid had a good job immediately to go to, okay, or the good programs that were going on there because we were all prosperous and could readily afford him, it'd make it easier. But stepping back a little bit more, is there anything else you'd like to tell us about your... Let me ask you this: what made you want to run? Why did you want to pound your head with a hammer here?
My family asked me that still till today. And the key reason is the lack of education happening from home to the school to society. And it scares me that the next generation isn't prepared to take on what's about to happen economically.
Which is, for example, $1.2 million in debt plus Hawaii. About $1.2 million with the Hawaii debt for each young person, each taxpayer. I'm sorry to cut you off, but I just wanted to kind of sneak that in.
That's exactly what scares me. And are they, are a lot of Puna families are in rural areas that don't have internet access, that don't have outside accountability? So they don't know what's going on. They think they receive their check every month, and I'm not hitting on welfare. I've been on welfare myself, but what I am saying is that we need to look beyond welfare on how we're going to get Puna going forward for the next generation.
Thank you, Cherish. I think you're really bringing up some really good points. And about that, again, not hitting on anybody either, because God knows, some people do legitimately need help, some people, of course, are abusing it. But again, I would say back to that, and this is where it would be good if someone with your awareness gets in, okay? That we have to really look at the system and what systemic... You know, yes, there are individual problems and issues, but there's also systemic issues, okay? And a lot of it, basically, I believe, is that a lot of it... And a lot of people, like, here's something you may not have known. On our county, this is approximately right, I don't remember the exact number, but there's like for every three employees that work for the county, 10 in this county are working for the state. Okay? So you have a very high state dominance. One thing I know, when I had Brittany Smart on here a long time ago, we were talking, and I got the impression, I think it may have been directly on the interview, it is on Hawaii Political Reporter, you could find it if you care, that the state is making millions and millions and millions of dollars off our garbage. They're just sucking it out, okay, the metal and all that stuff. So there's a lot of that going on, which is basically going to the big shots on the other islands and their contributors and stuff, instead of staying here and helping the people. We're being deprived, okay? It's a reverse Robin Hood, okay, to a large extent, okay? Now, Cherish, let's get into anything else on your background. Basically, so you saying the education is the main thing that makes you really want to run, and I guess helping the people, seeing... See, I guess you were seeing the trajectory of what's happening, okay? And it's kind of freaking you out.
It is, because there's such lack of knowledge. And I'm not sitting here saying that I'm any more knowledgeable about a situation than anyone else. What I'm saying is that we need to take it upon ourselves to get educated what's happening here in Hawaii and what's going to be happening here in Hawaii economically, business-wise, in our school systems. You know, we're trying to go to charter schools because people aren't happy with DOE. Where are we going, and what is it exactly you, the people, want to see regarding these issues? Come and see me, come and see your representative, make them clear, because we can't do it alone.
Okay, that's a question I usually say for later, but we're going to, I guess, it's a perfect segue. Let's get to it right now. What is your philosophy of governance? What I'm specifically trying to ask here, okay? And let's say, are you the quote-unquote... Listen carefully for your answer, because you want to listen to this one, okay? Are you the quote-unquote "principled politician," okay, which will take what they feel, okay, is the right thing, even if their representatives don't want it, they're against it, they're screaming at them, "Hey, we don't want this," or are you the representative for the people, the vessel for the people? Which one of those are you, Cherish? Okay, you mentioned, you know...
It doesn't need, I don't need time to figure that one out. I'm the vessel for the people. You are the reason that I decided to do this. I am concerned. I've been, I have outreach programs, I have an outreach program called Hope Hawaii, and it's helping other people excel. And that program has brought me to domestic violence people, it has brought me to homelessness, it has brought me, made me aware of just drug users in our streets and why they're doing it. You know, people look at them as, oh, they're no good-for-nothing ripoffs. You know what? There is a purpose behind some of their meaning. They have a meaning, and it may not be one that we agree with as a government, but they're providing for their families something that is not being able to be provided for them. I'm not in agreement with drug users and drug abuse, domestic violence, or homelessness. What I'm saying is that it is an issue that's on our doorstep that we need to start looking at. How, when, where can we put these facilities?
You know, I think that's really good, and I kind of like where you're going with this. And here's the reason why. I mean, there's a lot of people, and I know some hard lines, and I could say EG, okay, maybe, and so... And you know who you are when I'm talking about you, okay? And just, well, you know, let's throw them away, let's throw the kid... You know what? I'm sorry, that costs a lot of money, it's wasting a human being's life, okay? And what I think Cherish is getting at, and it's something we don't want to address, but it is a reality. And the politicians, you know, we all love to give them a hard time, but you know, it's us too, okay? And they have a lot of difficulty in their situation. So the key question, I think, and I was talking about this with Ray, but I, excuse me, Roy, but I think what you're trying to say basically is, let's try to make lemonade out of lemons here. What can we do with this situation to make it better and practical? And it is a reality, and you know, I thank you for even acknowledging it and going in there and wanting to deal with it. And I would say again, the more the system, as they say, "A rising tide lifts all boats," okay? So the more we can free the system and give them a chance and let them know it is their responsibility to perform once there is a true opportunity there, then that's something we could go after. I think it would be a very big positive. And I think you have the youth, the intelligence, the vigor, and the background, and this is interesting.
Thank you.
You know, the first thing I was, we were, Cherish and I were doing a couple of things behind the camera, you know, it's off the camera, so to speak, you know, talking about the economy and such. And it's just like, I was listening, I said, "My God," you know, it's true that men and women are on a different wavelength, no doubt about it, okay? But now really, we're seeing the positive, I mean, because everyone has their strengths and weaknesses, and this is a positive, because I think most men, I myself, probably wouldn't really be focusing on this, okay? And I think she has an awareness and a touch at a lower level, which is good, okay? Which, where you could basically help things from the ground up and get that access and do things that a lot of us couldn't. So let's segue into that. Now, you said you were doing something, Hope Hawaii or whatever? So how could your experiences in these kind of businesses and fields and things you've done relate to help? How can you make a positive change from the ground up in our community?
Well, my business actually is called Aloha Services. It's an umbrella for three smaller businesses that I own. It's Aloha Thrift Shop, Aloha Catering, and Aloha Services, which is a maintenance service. So we are actually able to get out into the community and deal with situations on a smaller scale. Unfortunately, we don't have the finances to deal with them on a larger scale, but we have brought them to Billy Canoy's table, we have brought them to Zendo's table, and we want to see, I really wanted to see in two years where it was going to lead, and unfortunately, it didn't lead anywhere, and that's where I came in and said, you know what? I can't sit back and complain that it's not getting done if I'm not going to do nothing about it. So my heart told me, just do it.
Amen.
You know the people, you know what their needs are, you know what they want. They don't even want to vote because they can't trust who they're voting for. We got 240 people registered to vote, and we are so excited that they want to be a part of something new, refreshed, just minimized. It doesn't need to be complicated, it needs to be done. And that's where we, that's where our foundation is starting, at the bottom where the people feel they are. And we're going to bring them to a level to where they know that they are important in this community.
And they're heard, and they're represented from what you said.
They're represented, yes.
Yeah, and that brings us back to two points I'd like to go into. One is about more in-depth on your business and the background, which is obviously very helpful for an economic, the situation where we do have economic problems that are, if they're not here now, they will be coming.
They are.
People, if you don't know it, check it out, $2.6 approximately dollars to every, coming in from the federal government to Hawaii for everyone going out. That's not going to last, it cannot last, especially with the changes likely in the Senate, the whole budget situation, et cetera. So going back to what you said, okay, about essentially they're not being served and represented. So we have also a situation where I believe, you know, the mayor and others, the big players, they're playing for bigger, higher stakes, the governorship or whatever, and they're trying to balance everything out to keep the ones who fund them, the unions and such as that. Nothing against unions, anything honest, anything good, any working person, I love them. Anybody who's trying to contribute, I love them, okay? It's positive. But, okay, if they're selling out the people that they're supposed to directly be represented, okay? Because of special interests or their future, that's very disappointing, okay?
It is, and we see it on a daily basis. In my work, people are always telling me, you know, "What is that good-for-nothing so-and-so doing for us? What is this good-for-nothing so-and-so doing for us?" If the people who are not voting can see it, where are the people who vote? What is their perspective on this issue? And these are the people that I want to be in touch with. I want to know, why is it that we are not holding these people accountable? Why is it that we are not at every county council meeting knocking on that pulpit saying, "Hey, what is being done in my community? There's such a lack." And we have, we see infrastructure coming up, yes. Is it going to benefit everyone? No, it'll benefit a few hundred people, and then you'll see the turnaround, and then you'll see the knots in it. We're going to have such big problems on our roads because of these new infrastructures, because they're not being thought out properly, and that concerns me because my teenagers are on these roads. So I really want to look into different roads and how we are going to benefit them, especially here in Puna, Upper Puna area. We need access roads, we need emergency access roads in and out of our subdivisions, and there's such a lack of it. On my way here, I had two routes I could have taken, and of course, I took the easier route. But what about when that route is not available to these people? How are they going to get in and out of here? We have the lava, we have emergency issues. How can we make it better for emergency crews and the people in these districts to just get to work every day when we have bad weather? That's a concern.
Yeah, I've heard about that. A lot of people are telling me it's a tough commute, okay, coming out. I'm fortunate, I usually time mine to go around it. But you know, back onto that, so let's follow that up a little further, not specifically with the roads. But it sounds to me, okay, like you may be an honest person for the people. So you don't have any special interest money, I guess, coming in? Are there any large contributors or...
Not at all. We are not accepting no donations for this campaign. We thought it out, we knew that we were going to run in two years. And I'm saying "we" because my family is deeply involved in this, my children and my husband. And we put away so much money from every check, $25 to be exact, because we live on a very basic income, we live paycheck to paycheck, we rent our home. And we decided, okay, in two years, if this is what you're going to do...
You know, Cherish?
And we put it away, and we decided that we're not going to take other people's hard-earned money to do what we want to do for the people.
I really respect that in a lot of ways, because number one, it shows me that you're thinking ahead and saving, and this is something sorely lacking with most of America now. This is one of our problems that we've gone down, I believe, because we're not planning ahead, we're not thinking for the long term. It's always instant gratification, now, 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 okay? So you've seen right there, okay, with her own budget and her own situation here of responsibility that would probably be very rare, okay, right now in the county council. So you've seen that. Obviously, you have someone here who's not sitting flush with, you know, working on other people's money, so that's probably going to be a better steward for the county and the taxpayers' money, okay? And I, also, what you've just seen and heard, okay, is that she's not sold out to a special interest, because there are a lot coming into Puna who are trying to buy it indirectly, and they're funding a lot of candidates, okay? And you should look and see, okay, the funding reports, opensecrets.org and the Hawaii State Election Commission. Who do you have to file to? Where is that one? I mean, or do you...
Campaign Spending Commission.
Campaign Spending, and check it out, okay? Because this is, I'll tell you something, and here's something else positive, and we've been fortunate, like with Roy, okay? And that basically, you know what? If you decide to get out of this in two years, or if you decide to make a hard vote right now, you have your own business. You're not tied and on the hook and sinker, "Well, I better do what my bosses, you know, the people were paying and all that stuff, and they're going to give me the money for their ads and to get reelected, want." And this is, you know, it's disgusting, the last election cycle in this one, we've seen a lot of money come from outside this area.
Very unfortunate.
And it's, I guarantee you, it's not for our benefit, okay? So I think we've pretty much gone over that some. Now, let's get into some of the issues, okay? And then maybe back to a little philosophy of governing. I mean, we know the issues, 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 issues. Number one, or certainly one of the top three, has got to be the incinerator. What's happening there?
Well, Billy Canoy has put it back on the table that he would like to see a garbage incinerator put in Hawaii. And we know that it's not going to work. We have come across so many different questions regarding this. I'm actually sitting in front of a piece of paper right now that answers a lot of the questions that you may have, and...
By the way, that article, Kim Pinkerton sent me this one. And this is "Six Myths About County's Waste Incineration Plan." This is on the Big Island Now, dated July 28th.
Yes.
Or actually, that's today, I guess, Bart, but you might want to check that out. "Six Myths About the County's Waste Incineration Plan" by Hunter Bishop.
Yes.
Take it away.
So Hunter Bishop has brought a lot of acknowledgement to this, to this insight for you. And you, the people, have to get online and get educated regarding these things. I mean, I can sit here all day and tell you, and Ross can sit here all day and tell you these different issues, but until you can see them for yourself, I, let me tell you, I've seen some new information today that has blown me away, that I am just hungry to go look after. And I want you to have that hunger for yourselves because your children and your children's children are the ones who are going to be directly affected by that about what all we are doing in the next two years. And let me tell you, I'm not here for the next two years. I'm here regardless if I'm in or out of county council for you, I'm here for you. You can find me in Pohua Town, you can find me in Ina Loa, you can find me... You see me on the street, I'm always picking up rubbish or talking story with people, stop me. You have questions, you have concerns, let me know, I'm there to help you. And, but getting back to the incinerator. The incinerator is a big price tag for our county, and it's not one that we need to uphold right now. They're worried that the landfill is being, is going to be overloaded within the next two years. Well, the truth is, we do have another landfill, but we need to get back to reuse, reduce, recycle. That is the basics and the basis of all economy that we can do. We are an island surrounded by what? Water. We cannot have our trash overloading our island where we need people to live. We can reduce these things. There's a big GMO issue right now. We're going to be talking about that in a few minutes. But let's use some of that cardboard to give farmers incentives to use it instead of pesticides.
Yeah, mulch and such, yeah.
We, let's use, let's mulch this stuff, mulch down what we can mulch and give it away. You know, people say, "Oh, but how are we going to afford to do that?" We're going to create a job through the mulching system, we're going to create jobs. I'd like to see it in every transfer station, a mulching station, a water station, a recycle station. Keau and Pohua have shown to be true candidates and have shown to be profitable for the state. Let's use those profits to create new jobs.
I think what she may be talking about here, if you're not aware, and we had Brittany Smart on a few years ago, who was in the waste business, okay? And that there is money in waste, okay? They're extracting the metal out. Unfortunately, now, most of that's going to the state, okay? Which I'm sure they really don't want to hear. One other topic, but it's truth, it's going out of our community. It's our, we're bringing the money in, we're spending it, and they're taking the profits out, okay? So that could be right, one situation right there. Now, speaking on the one thing to add on to that, basically, we just spent, I believe, and this is a rough estimation, there was a bond issue a while ago. It's basically indebted, all of us, $2,000 each, okay, for that, okay, about. Now, do we need another one? I mean, where's, okay, now we're $1.2 million in debt already, which is never going to get paid. That's a whole nother subject, and inflation, inflation. We're going to pay for it in another way, big way, okay? But anyway, so Cherish, so your thoughts basically on that, and in a nutshell, we're going to refer to Hunter Bishop, but also, you're saying the cost, the capital budget, and it could be done other ways?
Yes, definitely.
So number one down, number two, okay? Let's go to GMO. GMO!
GMO! There's a new video, it says GMO, O-M-G-G-O-D, and it is amazing. I had the opportunity to watch it, and you know, myth? GMO has been around for a very long time, but people are starting to realize its effects today in our society on where we are as an island, and that concerns them. And I understand their concern. GMO is...
Well, let's put it this way, okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Well, how about this way? Do you support the ban, okay? Do you believe that was the right thing to be done?
I think it's too wide a ban, people aren't going to follow it. There, there is an issue with... I support the ban, I'm sorry, yes, I do support the ban. I believe that people should be notified of what they're eating. They should have the right to know, like we do for recycling. We label all the bottles that we need to, that can be recycled, and the ones that aren't recycled...
Okay, so you're saying the labeling is good?
Labeling is a start.
Okay, and you may have some questions, or you want to do it a different way, and I cut you off, and I apologize. So go ahead, develop your thought there on the GMO. What do you feel is the right way? Do we simply leave the ban in place, or you were saying maybe some changes need to be made? Any other thing on GMO, Cherish?
I think that labeling is a start to get us somewhere. One of the other candidates made a reference saying that it'll never happen. With that mentality, you're right, it won't happen. We need to start somewhere regarding it, and that regard is with you. Are you interested in having your food labeled? Are you not interested in having it labeled? It boils down to what is it that you want to see your money spent on? Do you want to see more research being done regarding it? Because there are others out there who are pro-GMO, who say, you know what? It's not that bad for you, using sunscreen is even worse than eating genetically-modified food. Well, okay, where do you want your money spent? Do you want to see me see to it, bring it to council, that you want labeling on your food? How do you want it directed? I want your input, let me know.
Okay, what's one other thing on that? And you're looking at it from the health-wise, and a lot of people do that. To me, even if the thing was actually healthier, okay, I still wouldn't want it in general, in an open field. And I understand people with papayas and everything, maybe have a different... Maybe there's some exception or difference for that. Here's a simple reason why. You were talking about large multinationals like Monsanto coming in, monopolizing a market, kicking out our local seed producers, okay? Potentially suing them, okay? And definitely altering our landscape. I believe the bee situation here has been dramatically hit by it, and others. At any rate, even again, if it was good, you're now looking at concentrating our food supply into a few companies, this is not good. I mean, if you look throughout history, armies, money, food, okay? That's guns, okay? That's the thing they try to control, and the people have problems, okay? And you know, they have control of the money through the Federal Reserve, okay? They have control of our food, or trying, much more and more with GMO, okay? They have essentially, obviously, control the armies, okay? The guns, the really good stuff, we don't have, okay? So I mean, even though they say that guns are out of control, I mean, basically, the military has an advantage and the government has an advantage. So the people are at a disadvantage thus. Anyways, continuing on with that, so please check out for the GMO yourself and the consequences of this, having multinationals control our local food supply and hurting a lot of our farmers. You hear about a few here who may be helped, but it's not helping the soil, and in the long run, it is hurting our local economy and our farmers, I believe. Moving on to the, I'm sorry, last word?
I'm sorry, it is hurting our local farmers. A lot of local farmers say that they... We have one candidate who is supporting GMO, and I encouraged him. He encouraged me to look into it, and I'm encouraging him to go back and look at his own research because there's more damage being done than good.
Who is this, Daniel Palaika or who?
No, this is Tim Law.
Okay, he's supporting GMO, okay? Well, you know, I mean, I think what she said, he should look carefully. And again, it's not even just the food directly, it's all the other aspects of it. Moving on to the third big one.
Yes.
What, take a guess?
Geothermal.
That's the one.
I would like to see geothermal eventually winged out of Puna, actually. A lot of people tell me, "Cherish, that's never going to happen." Someone made, one of the candidates, actually, Ms. Tiffany Hunt made a reference last night that that would never happen because the money is too great. Well, you know what? We are the people who create that money, and I say that we start putting some pressure on them. Fees need to be increased for their wrongdoing, and I believe that they really, really, really need to look at themselves. Their concern, the people of Puna's concern is, what about the people who have jobs there? You know what? Those people are well-qualified, they will find other jobs. And I'm sorry that I have to put it out like that, but that, I'm passionate about geothermal not being in my kids' backyard. I live a mile away from that place, maybe a mile and a half away. And eventually, what's going to happen to that land when they decide, you know, we've had enough of it? And eventually, what's going to happen to that land when they decide, you know, we've had enough of it, they're going to pick up and leave? We are not going to be able to use that land for hundreds of years because of the waste that's under there.
That's a valid point, I haven't even heard before, it's true.
And.
And I guess you heard Roy was saying yesterday that they're actually pumping the pentane underneath, it's at a corn, and basically, you know, that's gasoline essentially.
Yes, so the issues that have to do with geothermal, from fracking to pumping it back into the grounds. You know, a lot of people don't know this, but PGV and ORMAT is already providing Green Lake residents with residential water. Why is that? Why do they have to provide them with water? They live less than a quarter of a mile away from the plant. Is there something wrong with the groundwater that they can't drink their own water? Questions we should be asking?
Yeah, that's great questions. And you know, just to give this a quick summary, because a lot of people who are not in this district don't get it, as I didn't, I used to not get it, okay? And basically, there are several things. Yes, there's a potential health, yes, it's being built on a Zone 1 seismic, very dangerous here, okay? And also, the key thing to know, this is not the same geothermal that there is in Yellowstone in California. This is a very toxic, very potentially heavy, killing, okay, you know, phenomenon. And then there's also the issue of home rule. Do you wish to respect people who wish to have some control of their environment? Or are you just going to be an extractive person coming from above, grab it, take, hey, I don't care what happens to them, that's that. There's a lot of people in pain here, okay, because of this. I've seen one, I've mentioned it before, was literally turning green, okay, living near there and then moved away. I used to work near there, in fact, very close to it, and I would say one out of every six days, there was definitely some emission. So not to keep on them, because God knows, I mean, in a perfect world, that would work, but in Hawaii, you know, and there are other alternatives, okay, that we could get into. Okay, so we've done incinerator, GMO, how about another big one out here, hemp, okay, marijuana, decriminalizing marijuana?
Yes. We have to start somewhere. This is a huge industry. Marijuana is a huge industry, and you know what? A lot of people joke about saying the best marijuana comes out of Puna. Well, you know what, it's time that we start decriminalizing it and bringing it into an industry that is going to make us money. Why are we going to continue to put men and women in jail and cost us $55,000 to $60,000 a year to house them? For growing marijuana, when it can be brought into medicinal, it can be used for medicinal, it can, hemp can be, yes, marijuana and hemp are two different things. But in an industrialized world, they both have economic.
Benefits.
Benefits and uses that can bring our state, not only Puna, into a level of expectation that people are going to respect. And bring us to out of debt. It is a possibility.
It is absolutely a possibility, it enriches the soil, it's a nitrogen fixer. And by the way, I've never smoked marijuana in my life, I personally have no interest in it, okay? But I know, I recognize, I hear, okay, the values of medicinal values, which are very great. I know a friend of mine who's a naturopath doctor, her horse was dying, and she basically made her something called ganja butter, because she couldn't afford the pills otherwise. This thing just, it's literally a weed, okay, so it grows as a weed, and that's to go fix nitrogen in the land, okay? And the other bigger issue, I think, is a moral issue. So now you're talking about putting someone in jail, throwing away the key, costing a lot of other people money to house them there, okay, for, for no violence, not harming anybody. It's ridiculous. And then looking back, what are the other consequences? Well, the border thing going on right now. Gigantic problem, you know what, if there was no drug situation where we weren't trying to criminalize this and make it so they would make so much money smuggling the drugs across the border. We would have probably, none of the violence, or certainly a lot less down there with the gangs and such, and we would have less pressure for these people to come up, okay? To try to escape that, if that's what's going on and other issues. Okay, you went into education some, you wanted to access roads. Here's some tough ones, okay? Black swans, okay? Now, we all know, and this happens to everybody, everybody in office, unexpected things come up, okay? So how would you deal with them, okay? What's your style of governance here? And, you know, how can you put your life skills, okay, and your abilities with the community to best use to serve us? And what would be your method? How would you go about that?
Well, how I do everything. When I decided to open the thrift shop in Pahuahua Town, I had to second, I second guessed myself. Because there's already Arc of Hilo has a unit in Pahuahua that has a thrift store, and then we have the recycle unit. And did I want to compete or take away from either of those businesses? But you know what I learned through having the business, through opening the thrift shop, is I took it to the people, and they said, you know what? There's more than enough ways to use recycled materials, and you're giving back to the community through this service, that, through your business, in a service manner. So what I want to really say about black swans is that they come up every day in my regular life. I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother, issues come up that you can't foresee. And how you handle them is with patience and perseverance. You're going to deal with them as they come, you know, and deal with them from the people that are bringing them to you. In an issue that, in a manner that will bring peace to whatever that is. Now, let's take education, for example, and charter school. Right now, there's a big push between charter schools and education, charter school and.
Public.
Public school. Now, public schools get funding through the state and the federal government, right? Okay, so we are going to, why is it, charter schools are saying, why is it that they are not allowed the same, the same responsibility? They want the money, they, they have the same goal to educate your child. Why is it that they are not receiving this? Well, in that manner, you have to look at, why is it and where is it? You know why? Because the, they consider them a special, special interest group. That they're taking money away from the money that is allocated for these programs. Now, the program is not to hurt the DOE system, it's to advance our children into the next level for our district.
And also, I think, and let me tell you, in almost every case, competition is good. Let's even look at your race, for example. Having with the six, seven of you guys, I'm sure you're learning from each other, okay, you're having to improve. Tell us about that, I mean, you know, and we do want to get into that a little bit more, but the point is here, if you have two institutions of a sense, having to compete some, at least some, it really should be three or more, okay? But, you know, then they're going to have to be better to earn it, okay? And where we have a fixed, and this isn't against the unions, and it's not against the schools either, okay? But everybody, everyone, I know certainly me, we can always be doing something better, okay? And choice is a good thing, instead of having one size fits all. And I've seen myself that when these children end up, okay, when these, in these charter schools, the parents are usually more involved, the kids more involved, there's more pressure on them. They tend to do better, and this is important, as Cherish is saying, this is our future. I mean, we can either have, you know, a bunch of, you know, 99 out of 100 kids are bozo losers, okay? With their baggy pants producing nothing, okay? Or we can have somebody that's actually producing something, which was actually for the benefit of the elder people too, because that's what's going to keep the system stable, they need to retire and such. So this is a major issue, and I, I think what you're basically saying is innovation and competition should be allowed.
Should be allowed, definitely.
Now, what other areas of government that you've seen, is there anything else like that? I mean, we could probably go on actually all day for this, but anything here where it's kind of piqued your interest, any issues that have come up from other candidates, or you've been seeing that, where there could be some possible innovation, things that have kind of said, hey, you know what, that's something I'd like to follow up on, anything kind of.
You know, I didn't know much about drawing the droids and helicopters.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And that has become a really big issue, especially in Puna. You know, the invasion of privacy that is being taken away from landowners and homeowners is, has become a huge issue regarding these drawings and.
What she's talking about a little bit, and I think this is to enhance us a little, she's talking about the drones. Yes, there are helicopters, manned helicopters, and planes and planes and all that, but there's also satellites sitting way up there in space, we all probably know about Google Earth. The county has already have a mapping, in fact, you can look, it's called geographical information. They're overlaying all these images to the property, so, and they're going to start assessing, okay, via the air. So every unpermitted building and everything out there supposedly is going to get assessed better. Now, that's supposedly, okay? Well, first off, we have to go back, and I didn't get into this at all with you, but I think the building code, if you look at it, it's, let's put it this way. Moke Stevens was on our program two years ago, and he said, they did a, and he's a contractor, and they did a calculation that when you consider every single tax and every government requirement pushed in there from the very beginning, 90% of your house cost, okay, is from the government, 90%. Now, I know myself, because I'm a contractor too, that I could easily attribute half of it, okay, in many cases, I mean, easily. And that's not even going back down the chain, what was added on there. So what we're looking at here, okay, is not just an invasion of privacy for, you know, whatever may be on the property, okay? And I know that Roy was, for example, considering grubbing and all this such. But, you know, let's say people do have a garden, let's say it's growing hemp, okay? I don't have it, like I say, I don't, you know, actually want it on this land or anything like that. But, you know, do we need to go and now have like Big Brother Orwell, okay? I mean, and also, I know, I've heard women, okay, they talk to me, because, you know, the, when they do the green harvest, they're taking showers, some of them are outdoor showers, and they hate that. The guys are coming, ah, look at that show, you know, and all that stuff, okay?
That was one of the big concerns when I was out, when I was out doing door to door, is, you know, we don't have inside showers. So these tour helicopters are going over while I'm trying to get ready for work, you know, very inappropriate, they're very concerned regarding that. Noise, a lot of them work nights, and they just feel the noise is a huge issue.
There's all kinds of things that can be going on. I mean, think about the potential even for crime and robbery, there's many things open. So I think most of us, and I guess what you're saying is you're not in favor of the invasion of the privacy, okay, for these government, I mean, entities.
And you know what I expressed with my fellow candidates in the past few forums that we've had, is that your neighbor, if you're grubbing, I don't know if much, many of you know what that is in general, maybe Ross can explain to, it means.
Go ahead, tell us how, what, how it's been expressed.
How it's been expressed is that when you buy a piece of property, you take it down to nothing. You cut all the trees, you cut back on all of the, and you can get a special permit to do so, a lot of commercial businesses do it. But they don't want it done in residential areas. So this is my understanding now, I'm learning this as we go, I, I didn't hear, I just thought it's your property, you can buy it, you can do whatever you want with it, but it's not the case. So that's a good thing about me, is that I'm willing to learn new things, I'm very teachable, you know? And this is something that I was amazed about. I thought, wow, it's your property, why can't you do such a thing? If you want a clean slate to start with, then why shouldn't you have that right? And it's because of all of, a lot of people are doing it now because they feel that it'll get rid of all the invasive species, like, you know, koki frogs and red ants. But what others are saying is that you're just pushing that off into someone else's property. So that was a lot of the issue that came up to me.
Well, let's look at that a little bit, that's an interesting issue, and I tend to probably be with you, okay, that you, now, here's the thing. I know that, like, for example, with Roy and other, I, I consider myself a green and environmentalist, but I'm not like a full-on total, total one, okay? I'm also libertarian and mixed with, you know, progressive and conservative and everything else, like a lot of us, like, I'm an independent, okay? Which is what I believe most of us actually are, okay? So it's your property, now, if it's not in a conservation zone, and you're not pushing it off into someone else, because that doesn't necessarily have to be a case. You can gather it up, put it in one corner of your property, okay? Now, what there be, there is generally speaking, there, there's volumes of material moved, especially the earth, and they are concerned potentially with the water flow and such as that. So if those are all addressed, it's clean, and it's not harming your neighbor, not invasive to them, not a conservation land. Why do we need to have a satellite up there, okay, telling them what can be done? Again, I mean, if it's a subdivision or a conservation land, special thing, then maybe that's another case, okay? But in general, I mean, for example, let's look at quote unquote agricultural land, okay? Now, the old days, these used to be cane lands, okay? And I'm, again, I'm all for nature, preserving it, I love it, I want things green, but come on, how did they have to, I mean, what do you think happened in a cane land? Oh, let's leave everything up there, okay? Now, I hear, again, special historic sites, okay, this isn't to disrespect any environmentalists, I'm one too, okay? But also, there's a balance with property rights, and also a balance of invasion of privacy for this and many other things. And what's your, next thing you know, the police may be monitoring that, okay? And it's not like, whoa, 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 you know, if you have nothing to be afraid of, hey, they're, they're watching women, okay, they're doing, you can look on the news and see what's going on, okay? There's a lot, and then let's say some journalists, let's say you wanted to give a story, you knew something dirty that was happening, the journalist wanted to come and see you, they're tracking him, this is going on now, okay? We're becoming a surveillance society. So I think what you're saying, Cherish, is that you firmly will protect and value, okay, the privacy.
Yes.
Okay, well, I think we pretty much have most of the major issues. I guess I would know, let's actually go a little bit further, okay? And you know, this is a tough one to do, okay? And we're going to get to asking specifically why you believe you're the best candidate versus the others, okay? But could you make a comparison and a contrast a little bit? And you don't have to say one's better than the other, but can you differentiate clearly between, let's say, you, Tiffany, Franny, and Palaika, okay, on some of the issues? Where, as far as what you believe, where do you guys stand relative to each other on a lot of, let's go with geothermal, okay, GMO, incinerator, okay?
I'll start with Palaika. Palaika favors incinerator and GMO, geothermal, excuse me. I haven't heard a clear view on where he stands thus far on GMO.
And then again, these are all her opinions and what she's inferred, and you know, sometimes they do change their views as they go, so you should double check them yourself, but we're getting a rough idea, okay, at least what may be happening.
Tiffany, or let's stick with Palaika. Palaika has ties to outside investment that concern me. And we also have Tiffany Hunt, Edwards Hunt. She also has not made a stand on where she stands on geothermal. She has made a stand last night at our last forum that she does not support the incinerator. That was the first time we've heard that over her, over the last few forums that we've had together. And what I've learned, and who was Franny, Ms. Puel? Ms. Puel is, my concern with Ms. Puel is, her vision is strictly for the land. Malama da ina, and I am all for the land. I do not want to see it polluted, I do not want to see it misused. My children ha, and my grandchildren have to use this land, because I don't foresee them leaving. And this is their home. So my concern is that the land is her only focus. I need, and I want someone with representation that's going to look beyond the land, the people who have to live on the land, the structures that have to go on the land. The, the environment around the land, where, what about all those things? So that's my concern with Ms. Puel. She's a great person, I've got to know all of these candidates on a new level, and I have high respect for each of them. But I do have concerns with each and every one of them regarding where they want to take our county. And what their perspective on the people are. All, a bunch of them say they're for the people, but yet, have they reached out to the people during this campaign? You know, I made a total of 101 handmade signs, 44 of those signs have gone missing in subdivisions that are key to this race. South Kulani, North Kulani, Glenwood, these are places where candidates aren't, aren't willing to go. And that's where I want to be. I want to be in the midst of Eden Rock, Pole 69. Hey, what's going on? How can we, the county, help you? You know, what kind of programs do you want to see in your community? So there is a lack of that from my fellow candidates that I have not yet seen. They are concerned about GMO and geothermal, but there's so much more to Puna that we need to be concerned about. Those are two of the five big issues that I consider, but what about the other issues? The people, where do they stand? How can they go?
I'm going to say a little bit on that, and we're going to, we're probably going to have Bob Patrici on, he's going to go into depth, we're going to analyze this a little. And I'll give a little bit of analysis, what I can see myself, okay? And that is, without even naming names, we have two candidates who are obviously, I believe, very special interests and very much out for themselves, okay? And they're two major candidates, that's the fact, okay? They're not, I, you can see by their money flow and their past performance in history, they are not their, they, they know what's best, and it's going to happen to us, whether we like it or not. That's basically what I get, okay? Then we have two other, at least, and there's, and I would say personally, and God bless everybody, even those we may not agree with for running, because we have choice, okay? We all learn from each other, and even the ones we may think have nothing to offer, there's usually something they get right, okay? So we all learn. Now, one other thing you brought up is an issue, and let's tackle it, because this is kind of potentially a black swan, it's a black swan to me, I had no idea exactly about this one. And that is the Hawaiian issue. You said something is coming up, and maybe you could speak on that a little.
Sure. Hawaiian government movement is in a place where there's going to be a huge, well, I'm sorry, Hawaii sovereignty movement. Sovereignty government movement, let me get it right, is in a place where they are going to be taking a huge step forward to independence. And that is going to be happening in mid-August. There is a date set, but I'm not going to set the date myself, because I'm not really sure on which day they chose. That there are going, there's going to be a country that comes in and speaks up for Hawaiian na- That there are going, there's going to be a country that comes in and speaks up for Hawaiian natives. And that country has taken a huge stand on Hawaiian activists and where they should be and their rights. Because they were here when it happened. So I am very excited to see where this is going. People, the Hawaiian movement government has come to me and said, okay, Cherish, as a Hawaiian, where do you stand? Are you a politician or are you a Hawaiian? You know, and when that movement happens, how are you going to, um, how are you going to set yourself apart as a Hawaiian politician? And you know what? This is what I told them. The people of Hawaii, regardless if they're Hawaiian in blood rights or if they're Hawaiian in heart, they all deserve for one reason or another to be here. They have planted seed here that will grow and prosper and make us a great place. Unfortunately, what has happened to the Hawaiian people is unfortunate. And now we want public recognition for that. And I, as a Hawaiian, I would love that public recognition also. Not because I'm a politician or because I'm a small business owner or because I'm a large business owner. Should I be deprived of that? So that's what I tell them. I said, a politician is my job and I am not a politician. It is a job title. I am a public service to you, servant to you. And that's what I want to be. I don't want to be stuck behind no office doing, writing bill after bill after bill if it doesn't benefit you, the people. It doesn't make sense. We have bills out there that has nothing, have nothing to do with us. We don't know half of them, we've never heard of them. And now that I'm looking into all of this, I just think it was such a waste of money. Such a waste of time and energy for whoever had put that forth. And I could sit here all day and just give you number and ordinance and bill after bill on where I feel could be changed, should be changed. But what it boils down to is we're not, we're not educating ourselves what's happening in government. We're allowing them just to do what they want and we just go with the flow. And that's what differentiates me from my other candidates. I am not about going with the flow. I am about seeing what you, the people, really, really want and where and how is that going to benefit us as Hawaiians? And you being, living here in Hawaii gives you a sense of aloha, which makes you Hawaiian.
And I think she means Hawaiians, everybody on the island, not just of blood, okay? And I'm like, I, people who watch this show know, I'm part Native American and I feel this issue, I hear it. But we are where we are, okay? And a lot of people are here now through no fault of their own. Yes, we have to acknowledge what was done, that was horrible, okay? Those people should be given fair treatment, okay? They should be able to do what they want with their land, they should have non-GMO crap terror thrust upon them and all this stuff, okay? Their institutions should not be sold out, okay? They need to be treated correctly, but so does everyone else, okay? And we need to find that, okay?
We need to find, um, a medium for where we all can coexist together. And right now, there's so much division. When you listen to the Hawaiian, they don't want the Haoli, um, part of this. But you know what? Haoli just means foreigner. If you conscious, if you consider yourself Hawaiian because you live in Hawaii, then more power to you. Because you know what? My father is Haoli, Caucasian Native American. And I am proud who my father is. And I would not expect him to have to leave these islands because of his ancestry. He loves my mother, who is Native Hawaiian, and he has raised the three of us, actually seven of us, three blood children and they had fostered children. But they've raised us to love one another regardless of our skin color, regardless of our actions, regardless of who we or what we believe, all people have the right to be who they are. And we may not be in agreement with that. We may not understand why people are that way or why they, why they were raised that way. But what we're saying is that Hawaiian is Hawaii. That's how I look at it. If you want to call this place your home, you want to respect this place as your home. You have respect for the people who were mistreated so many years ago and overthrown by our United States government. You want to show that kind of respect and there's tons of foreigners who have come here, have learned the language. We can't even, I don't even know the language, you know? So I have high respect for these people. They want to call Hawaii their home. Then all I say is be educated on what Hawaii is and who we are as a people. Have aloha for one another.
Always the spirit, isn't it?
Yes.
It's a spirit.
It's the aloha spirit that makes you Hawaiian. So carry it throughout wherever you go, take it with the people you know and show it to those who don't know it.
Let's, let's go one more thing on this and I, and it kind of leads into the, you're talking about aloha and helping the people out. And obviously it's inclusive and you're kind, you can see this, I mean, it's trying to balance the reality, okay? Versus, you know, the evil that was done, okay? Now, I, it really kind of hurts me to hear you like you're having to rent, okay? And there's a lot of people here and some of them are fortunate enough to buy their property, but they don't have the money to develop it, okay? And I won't, and people who watch my show know I've been big in the building code. But I would imagine, okay, you would have the vision, not, and even the people who have the money and have the expensive homes and all this stuff. We are facing an economic tsunami and an inflation, which is going to be, we're just starting to feel the very first breeze of it. It's going to be ridiculous, okay? And it's going to make it harder. So I would hope, Cherish, and maybe you have some idea, but I'm sure you'll come up with it, that you will find ways, okay? Maybe through the county, reducing some of your bureaucracy and the ridiculously overdone standards, okay? For a lot of it, to make housing more affordable so people can have it and buy it and own it and maintain it and contribute it there instead, instead of having to be kind of at the mercy, okay, of whoever may have more money and assets at that point.
Well, at one point I did own my home and I did own a home in Paradise Park on 31st Street. And my youngest son was born 10 years ago and needed a liver transplant. So at that time, my husband and I both had to stop working and go to California and handle, um, his medical issues. Um, we're so grateful, they said he wouldn't live to be two weeks old and he is 10 today. So we are beyond grateful. So, um, in that process, um, we both stopped working. So we ended up losing our home in foreclosure, which really started right in the market of the boom. So it was really, uh, we were fortunate enough to be able to do our house on a short sale. Um, we had a balance and we've, um, taken this time to pay it off because we didn't want to leave it in the hands of someone else. They said, you know, oh, it was paid off, but you know what? That was our debt.
That's right, because you're responsible.
We're responsible for that.
And that's what we all have to get back to and it all run right.
Being responsible for your own actions. Because those actions are going to lead to your characterization. And that characterization is what leads you to be the person you are in public. And people say, you know, Cherish, the good thing about you is that you're no different at home than you are in public. And I feel really comfortable with that because I don't have to put on a facade for anyone. I am who I am. Um, I've been, um, told that the re, one of the reasons they don't feel I'm going to win this race is because of my lack of education. I am life educated. I have seen more in my life than most of you will see in the next, in, I've seen more in my short life here, right now, than you probably will see in a lifetime. I have been a teenage mother, I have been a teenage wife, I was a teenage widow. And I still continued to pursue my dreams and aspirations through all that adversity.
Dealing with medical difficulties, okay? Medical adversities, you know, running businesses, helping people. Now, you know what, that, and as far as the education thing, actually, you know what? There's a saying that, uh, basically, um, a hum, a kind man does more good than an educated man, okay? I think it's an Indian saying, it's something essentially like that. And I believe actually to have some of the education and a lot of people can, have, carry an arrogance with it, okay? That I think that's actually.
We see that with some of the other candidates.
I think that's actually a disadvantage because I think you're going to listen and I think you're going to learn from a fresh straight, a, a, excuse me, a, a fresh slate with common sense, okay? So we're not going to have some know-it-all come in there who thinks they know the whole system and knows everything and push the buttons. You know what? I think most of us are sick of the same old, same old, we're freaking sick of it, okay? And we want somebody decent who is going to get in there, serve the people's interest, work from the ground up, okay? Keep an open mind, do the open, you know, the right things and learn. So I don't think you have a disadvantage there, that's how I personally feel. And I think your education, and it's one thing, like I have seven cats here, okay? And I'll tell you something, the, the one who we call Bonehead, okay, is the, the one with the least brain. She's the happiest and she's the most productive and she has the most common sense by far, okay? The one who's real smart is neurotic, has problems, gets herself in the pro, I'm telling you. So common sense does a lot of good, especially when it's applied properly.
And that was my whole goal, is to bring common sense back to government.
Hmm, well, that's sorely lacking and we obviously need it. So Cherish, give us, why should we vote for you? Give us a wrap up here, talk to us.
Being part of your life in the last three or four months has been a remarkable journey. I am so excited about all the new friends and family I have made on this journey. And I am very excited to see where together we are going to take Puna. I am asking humbly for your vote on November 9th to see to it that I get into the general election and from there, we are going to move mountains. And I have a little saying that says, faith as small as a mustard seed can move mountains. And I believe that because I've seen huge mountains in my life being moved and restored. And I know that that's something that Puna needs, restoration. You're tired of the same old, same old and you know what? So am I. I'm an average person, I don't try to be nothing more than that. But let me tell you something, the average always achieve for over, over average. Because we feel that we can do more than just average. So I, I just come humbly before you and ask you to vote for me, Cherish Alameda. I'll be the num, first name on the ballot because I'm A. Choose me to be your county council member on August 9th. Mahalo.
So Cherish, I want to very much thank you for your time now.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And we really appreciate you running because it is, this is where we, and you know, we have good choices here. We have really good choices here. And hopefully people will see beyond the signs and the money, okay? And the titles and the, and the supposed advantages and just go, you know, what, do the right thing. So please really seriously consider Cherish.
Thank you.
We wish her well and we appreciate you being here and sharing your knowledge and your insights and your kindness with us.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you guys having me. Aloha.
Aloha.
There is no ag, other agency of government which can overrule actions that we take. There is no ag, other agency of government which can overrule actions that we take. There is no ag, other agency of government which can overrule actions that we take.
That would effectively be a takeover of monetary policy by the Congress. A repudiation of the independence of the Federal Reserve, which would be highly destructive to the stability of the financial system, the dollar and, uh, our national economic situation.
We don't, the Federal Reserve does not own any gold at all. We have not owned gold since 1934.
All our lives, we've been told that economics is boring. It's dull. It's not worth the time it takes to understand it. And all our lives, we've been lied to. War, poverty, revolution, they all hinge on economics and economics all rests on one key concept. Money. Money. It is the economic water in which we live our lives. We even call it currency. It flows around us, carries us in its wake, drowns those who are not careful. We use it every day in nearly every transaction we conduct. We spend our lives working for it, worrying about it, saving it, spending it, pinching it. It defines our social status, it compromises our morals. People are willing to fight, die and kill for it. But what is it? Where does it come from? How is it created? Who controls it? It is a remarkable fact that, given its central importance in our lives, not one person in a hundred could answer such basic questions about money as these.
So if you were planning a family, you'd want to know where babies come from. And this is a lot about banking. So let me ask you, where does money come from?
Where does the money come from?
Where does any money?
The government prints it, printed off.
Where does money come from?
How is new money created?
By labor. People work and produce wealth and that, and the money is supposed to match that wealth.
Where does money come from?
Well, I have a pretty different outlook on money. It actually comes from like trees, right?
But why is this? How could we be so ignorant about a topic of such importance? Where does money come from is a basic, childlike question. So why is our only response the childlike answer meant as a joke? It grows on trees. Such a profound state of ignorance could not come about naturally. From the time we are children, we are curious about the world and eager to learn about the way it works. And what could lead to a better understanding of the way the world works than a knowledge of money, its creation and destruction? Yet discussion of this topic is fastidiously avoided in our school years and ignored in our daily life. Our monetary ignorance is artificial, a smokescreen that has been erected on purpose and perpetrated with the help of complicated systems and insufferable economic jargon. But it doesn't take an economist to understand the importance of money. Deep down, we all know that the wars, the poverty, the violence we see around us hinges on this question of money. It seems like a thousand-piece jigsaw puzzle just waiting to be solved. And it is. The puzzle pieces, taken together, create an image of the Federal Reserve, America's central bank and the heart of the country's banking system. Despite its central importance to the economy, relatively few have heard of it and fewer still know what it is, despite the bank's attempts at self-description.
Our economy runs on a complex system of exchange of goods and services, in which money plays a key part. Coin, currencies, savings and checking accounts, the overall supply of money is managed by the Federal Reserve. Money is the medium through which economic exchanges take place. And money as a standard of value helps us to set prices for goods and services. The job of managing money, monetary policy, is to preserve the purchasing power of the dollar while ensuring that a sufficient amount of money is available to promote economic growth. The Federal Reserve also promotes the safety and soundness of the institutions where we do our banking. It ensures that the mechanisms by which we make payments, whether by cash, check or electronic means, operate smoothly and efficiently. And in its fiscal role, acts as the banker for the United States government. Now, these duties comprise the major responsibilities of our central bank.
But in order to really understand the Federal Reserve, we must first understand its origins and context. We must deconstruct the puzzle. The first piece of that puzzle lies here, in the White House. This is where the Federal Reserve Act, then known as the Currency Bill, was signed into law after passing the House and Senate in late December 1913. The New York Times of Christmas Eve 1913 described the festive scene. "The Christmas spirit pervaded the gathering. While the ceremony was a little less impressive than that of the signing of the Tariff Act on October 3rd last in the same room, the spectators were much more enthusiastic and seized every occasion to applaud." There in the White House that fateful December evening, President Wilson signed away the last veneer of control over the American money supply to a cartel. A well-organized gang of crooks, so successful, so cunning, so well-hidden, that even now, a century later, few know of its existence, let alone the details of its operations. But those details have been openly admitted for decades. Of course, just as we have been taught to find economics boring, we have been taught that this story is boring. This is the way the Federal Reserve itself tells it.
The United States was facing severe financial problems. At the turn of the century, most banks were issuing their own currency called banknotes. The trouble was, currency that was good in one state was sometimes worthless in another. People began to lose confidence in their money since it was only as sound as the bank that issued it. Fearful that their bank might go out of business, Fearful that their bank might go out of business, they rushed to exchange their banknotes for gold or silver. By attempting to do so, they created the Panic of 1907.
During the panic, people streamed to the banks and demanded their deposits. The banks could not meet the demand. They simply did not have enough gold and silver coin available. Many banks went under. People lost millions of dollars. Businesses suffered. Unemployment rose, and the stability of our economic system was again threatened.
Well, this couldn't go on. If the country was going to grow and prosper, some means would have to be found to achieve financial and economic stability.
To prevent financial panics like the one in 1907, President Woodrow Wilson signed the Federal Reserve Act into law in 1913.
But this is history as told by the victors, a revisionist vision in which the creation of a central bank to control the nation's money supply is merely a boring historical footnote, about as important as the invention of the zipper or an early 20th-century hula-hoop craze. The truth is that the story of the secret banking conclave that gave birth to that Federal Reserve Act is as exciting and dramatic as any Hollywood screenplay or detective novel yarn, and all the more remarkable for the fact that it is all true. We pick up the story, appropriately enough, undercover of darkness. It was the night of November 22nd, 1910, and a group of the richest and most powerful men in America were boarding a private railcar at an unassuming railroad station in Hoboken, New Jersey. The car, waiting with shades drawn to keep onlookers from seeing inside, belonged to Senator Nelson Aldrich, the father-in-law of billionaire heir to the Rockefeller dynasty, John D. Rockefeller Jr. A central figure on the influential Senate Finance Committee where he oversaw the nation's monetary policy, Aldrich was referred to in the press as the general manager of the nation. Joining him that evening was his private secretary Shelton, and a who's who of the nation's banking and financial elite. Ape Hyatt Andrew, the Assistant Treasury Secretary; Frank Vanderlip, president of the National City Bank of New York; Henry P. Davison, a senior partner of J.P. Morgan Company; Benjamin Strong Jr., an associate of J.P. Morgan and president of Bankers Trust Co.; and Paul Warburg, heir of the Warburg Banking Family and son-in-law of Solomon Loeb of the famed New York investment firm Kuhn, Loeb &amp; Co. The men had been told to arrive one by one after sunset to attract as little attention as possible. Indeed, secrecy was so important to their mission that the group did not use anything but their first names throughout the journey, so as to keep their true identities secret even from their own servants and waitstaff. The movements of any one of them would have been reason enough to attract the attention of New York's voracious press, especially in an era where banking and monetary reform was seen as a key issue for the future of the nation. A meeting of all of them, now that would surely have been the story of the century. And it was. Their destination? The secluded Jekyll Island off the coast of Georgia, home to the prestigious Jekyll Island Club whose members included the Morgans, Rockefellers, Warburgs, and Rothschilds. Their purpose? Davison told intrepid local reporters who had caught wind of the meeting that they were going duck hunting. But in reality, they were going to draft a reform of the nation's banking industry in complete secrecy. G. Edward Griffin, the author of the bestselling The Creature from Jekyll Island and a longtime Federal Reserve researcher, explains:
What happened is that the banks decided that since there was going to be legislation anyway to control their industry, that they wouldn't just sit back and wait and see what happened and cross their fingers that it would be okay. They decided that—to do what so many cartels do today. They decided to take the lead. And they would be the ones calling for regulations and reform. They liked the word "reform." And the American people are suckers for the word "reform." You just put that into any corrupt piece of legislation, call it "reform," and people say, "Oh, I'm all for reform." And so they vote for it or accept it. So that's what they were doing. They decided, "We will reform our own industry." In other words, "We will create a cartel, and we will give the cartel the power of government. We'll take our cartel agreement so that we can self-regulate to our advantage, and we'll call it the Federal Reserve Act. And then we'll take this—this cartel agreement to Washington and convince those idiots there to pass it into law." And that basically was the strategy. It was brilliant strategy. Of course, we see it happening all the time, and certainly in our own day-to-day, we see the same thing happening in other cartelized industry. Right now, we're watching it unfold in the field of healthcare, but at that time, it was banking, all right? And so, the—the banking cartel wrote their own rules and regulations, called it the Federal Reserve Act, got it passed into law, and it was very much to their liking because they wrote it. And in essence, what they had created is a set of rules which made it possible for themselves to regulate their industry, but they went even beyond that. In fact, it's clear to me, when I was reading their letters and their conversations at the time and the debates, that they never dreamed that Congress would go along and also give them the right to issue the nation's money supply. I mean, not only were they now going to regulate their own industry, which is what they started out as wanting to do, but they got this—this incredible gift that they didn't dream would be given to them, although they were negotiating for it. And that was, Congress gave them the authority to issue the nation's money. Congress gave away the—the sovereign right to issue the nation's money to the private banks. And so, all of this was in the Federal Reserve Act, and the American people were joyous because they were told, and they were convinced, that this was finally a means of controlling this big creature from Jekyll Island.
Amazingly enough, they were successful, not just in conspiring to write the legislation that would eventually become the Federal Reserve Act, but in keeping that conspiracy a secret from the public for decades. It was first reported on in 1916 by Bertie Charles Forbes, the financial writer who would later go on to found Forbes magazine. But it was never fully admitted until a quarter century later, when Frank Vanderlip wrote a casual admission of the meeting in the February 9th, 1935 edition of the Saturday Evening Post. "I was as secretive, indeed as furtive, as any conspirator. I do not feel it is any exaggeration to speak of our secret expedition to Jekyll Island as the occasion of the actual conception of what eventually became the Federal Reserve system." Over the course of their nine days of deliberation at the Jekyll Island Club, they devised a plan so overarching, so ambitious, that even they could scarcely imagine that it would ever be passed by Congress. As Vanderlip put it, "Discovery of our plan, we knew, simply must not happen, or else all our time and effort would be wasted." If it were to be exposed publicly that our particular group had got together and written a banking bill, that bill would have no chance whatever of passage by Congress. So what precisely did this conclave of conspirators devise at their Jekyll Island meeting? A plan for a central banking system to be owned by the banks themselves, a system which would organize the nation's banks into a private cartel that would have sole control over the money supply itself. At the end of their nine-day meeting, the bankers and financiers went back to their respective offices content in what they had accomplished. The details of the plan changed between its 1910 drafting and the eventual passage of the Federal Reserve Act, but the essential ideas were there. But ultimately, this scene on Jekyll Island too is just one piece of a larger puzzle. And like any other puzzle piece, it has to be seen in its wider context for the bigger picture to become visible. To understand the other pieces of the puzzle and their importance in the creation of the Federal Reserve, we have to travel backward in time. The story begins in late 17th-century Europe. The Nine Years' War is raging across the continent as Louis XIV of France finds himself pitted against much of the rest of the continent over his territorial and dynastic claims. King William III of England, devastated by his stunning naval defeat, commits his court to rebuilding the English navy. There's only one problem: money. The government's coffers have been exhausted by the waging of the war, and William's credit is drying up. A Scottish banker, William Patterson, has a banker's solution: a proposal to form a company to lend a million pounds to the government at 6% plus 5,000 management fee with the right of note issue. By 1694, the idea has been slightly revised, a 1.2 million-pound loan at 8% plus 4,000 for management expenses, but it goes ahead. The magnanimously titled Bank of England is created. The name is a carefully constructed lie, designed to make the bank appear to be a government entity, but it is not. It is a private bank owned by private shareholders for their private profit, with a charter from the king that allows them to print the public's money out of thin air and lend it to the crown. What happens here at the birth of the Bank of England in 1694 is the creation of a template that will be repeated in country after country around the world. A privately-controlled central bank lending money to the government at interest, money that it prints out of nothing. And the jewel in the crown for the international bankers that creates this system is the future economic powerhouse of the world: the United States. In many important respects, the history of the United States is the history of the struggle of the American people against the banksters that wish to control their money. By the 1780s, with colonies still fighting for independence from the crown, the bankers will get their wish. In 1781, the United States is in financial turmoil. The Continental, the paper currency issued by the Continental Congress to pay for the war, has collapsed from overissue and British counterfeiting. Desperate to find a way to finance the end stages of the war, Congress turns to Robert Morris, a wealthy shipping merchant who was investigated for war profiteering just two years earlier. Now, as superintendent of finance of the United States from 1781 to 1784, he is regarded as the most powerful man in America, next to General Washington. In his capacity as superintendent of finance, Morris argues for the creation of a privately-owned central bank deliberately modeled on the Bank of England that the colonies were supposedly fighting against. Congress, backed into a corner by war obligations and forced to do business with the bankers just like King William in the 1690s, acquiesces and charters the Bank of North America as the nation's first central bank. And exactly as the Bank of England came into existence loaning the British Crown 1.2 million pounds, the BNA started business by loaning 1.2 million dollars to Congress. By the end of the war, Morris has fallen out of political favor and the Bank of North America's currency has failed to win over a skeptical public. The BNA is downgraded from a national central bank to a private commercial bank chartered by the state of Pennsylvania. But the bankers have not given up yet. Before the ink is even dry on the Constitution, a group led by Alexander Hamilton is already working on the next privately-owned central bank for the newly-formed United States of America. So brazen is Hamilton in the forwarding of this agenda that he makes no attempt to hide his aims or those of the banking interests he serves. "A national debt, if it is not excessive, will be to us a national blessing," he wrote in a letter to James Dwayne in 1781. "It will be a powerful cement of our union. It will also create a necessity for keeping up taxation to a degree which, without being oppressive, will be a spur to industry." Opposition to Hamilton and his debt-based system for establishing the finances of the U.S. is fierce. Led by Jefferson and Madison, the bankers and their system of debt enslavement is called out for the force of destruction that it is, with Thomas Jefferson writing, "The spirit of war and indictment, since the modern theory of the perpetuation of debt, has drenched the earth with blood and crushed its inhabitants under burdens ever accumulating." Still, Hamilton proves victorious. The first bank of the United States is chartered in 1791 and follows the pattern of the Bank of England and the Bank of North America almost exactly. A privately-owned central bank with the authority to loan money that it creates out of nothing to the government. In fact, it is the very same people behind the new bank as were behind the old Bank of North America. It was Alexander Hamilton, Robert Morris's former aide, who first proposed Morris for the position of financial superintendent, and the director of the old Bank of North America, Thomas Willing, is brought in to serve as the first director of the first bank of the United States. Meet the new banking bosses, same as the old banking bosses. In the first five years of the bank's existence, the U.S. government borrows 8.2 million dollars from the bank, and prices rise 72%. By 1795, when Hamilton leaves office, the incoming Treasury Secretary announces that the government needs even more money and sells off the government's meager 20% share in the bank, making it a fully-private corporation. Once again, the U.S. economy is plundered while the private banking cartel laughs all the way to the bank that they created. By the time the bank's charter comes due for renewal in 1811, the tide has changed for the money interests behind the bank. Hamilton is dead, shot to death in a duel with Aaron Burr. The bank supporting Federalist Party is out of power. The public are wary of foreign ownership of the central bank, and what's more, don't see the point of a central bank in time of peace. Accordingly, the charter renewal is voted down in the Senate, and the bank is closed in 1811. Less than a year later, the U.S. is once again at war with England. After two years of bitter struggle, the public debt of the U.S. has nearly tripled from 45.2 million dollars to 119.2 million dollars. With trade at a standstill, prices soaring, inflation rising, and debt mounting, President Madison signs the charter for the creation of another central bank, the Second Bank of the United States, in 1816. Just like the two central banks before it, it is majority privately-owned and is granted the power to loan money that it creates out of thin air to the government. The 20-year bank charter is due to expire in 1836, but still in his first term, President Andrew Jackson has already vowed to let it die prior to renewal. Believing that Jackson won't risk his chance for reelection in 1832 on the issue, the bankers forward a bill to renew the bank's charter in July of that year, four years ahead of schedule. Remarkably, Jackson vetoes the renewal charter and stakes his reelection on the people's support of his move. In his veto message, Jackson writes in no uncertain terms about his opposition to the bank. "Whatever interest or influence, whether public or private, has given birth to this act, it cannot be found either in the wishes or necessities of the executive department by which present action is deemed premature, and the powers confirmed upon its agent not only unnecessary, but dangerous to the government and country. It is to be regretted that the rich and powerful too often bend the acts of government to their selfish purposes. If we cannot at once, in justice to interests vested under improvident legislation, make our government what it ought to be, we can at least take a stand against all new grants of monopolies and exclusive privileges, against any prostitution of our government to the advancement of the few at the expense of the many, and in favor of compromise and gradual reform in our code of laws and system of political economy." The people side with Jackson, and he's re-elected on the back of his slogan, "Jackson and No Bank." The president makes good on his pledge. In 1833, he announces that the government will stop using the bank and will pay off its debt. The bankers retaliate in 1834 by staging a financial crisis and attempting to pin the blame on Jackson, but it's no use. On January 8th, 1835, President Jackson succeeds in paying off the debt, and for the first and only time in its history, the United States is free from the debt chain of the bankers. In 1836, the Second Bank of the United States charter expires, and the bank loses its status as America's central bank. It is 77 years before the bankers can regain the jewel in their crown, but it is not for lack of trying. Immediately upon the death of the bank, the banking oligarchs in England react by contracting trade, removing capital from the U.S., demanding payment in hard currency for all exports, and tightening credit. This results in a financial crisis known as the Panic of 1837, and once again, Jackson's campaign to kill the bank is blamed for the crisis. Throughout the late 19th century, the United States is rocked by banking panics brought about by wild banking speculation and sharp contractions in credit. By the dawn of the 20th century, the bulk of the money in the American economy has been centralized in the hands of a small clique of industrial magnates, each with a near-monopoly on a sector of the economy. There are the Astors in real estate, the Carnegie's and the Schwabs in steel, the Harriman's, Stanford's, and Vanderbilt's in railroads, the Millens and the Rockefellers in oil. As all of these families start to consolidate their fortunes, they gravitate naturally to the banking sector. And in this capacity, they form a network of financial interests and institutions that centered largely around one man, banking scion and increasingly America's informal central banker in the absence of a central bank, John Pierpont Morgan. John Pierpont Morgan—or Pierpont, as he prefers to be called—is born in Hartford, Connecticut in 1837 to Junior Spencer Morgan, a successful banker and financier. Morgan rides his father's coattails into the banking business, and by 1871 is partnered in his own firm, the firm that was eventually to become J.P. Morgan &amp; Co. It is Morgan who finances Cornelius Vanderbilt's New York Central Railroad. It is Morgan that finances the launch of nearly every major corporation of the period, from AT&amp;T to General Electric to General Motors to DuPont. It is Morgan who buys out Carnegie and creates the United States Steel Corporation, America's first billion-dollar company. It is Morgan who brokers a deal with President Grover Cleveland to save the nation's gold reserves by selling 62 million dollars' worth of gold to the Treasury in return for government bonds. And it is Morgan who, in 1907, sets in motion the crisis that leads to the creation of the Federal Reserve. That year, Morgan begins spreading rumors about the precarious finances of the Knickerbocker Trust Company, a Morgan competitor and one of the largest financial institutions in the United States at the time. The resulting crisis, dubbed the Panic of 1907, shakes the U.S. financial system to its core. Morgan puts himself forward as a hero, boldly offering to help underwrite some of the faltering banks and brokerage houses to keep them from going under. After a bout of hand-wringing over the nation's finances, a congressional committee is assembled to investigate— a congressional committee is assembled to investigate the Money Trust, the bankers and financiers who brought the nation so close to financial ruin and that wield such power over the nation's finances. The public follows the issue closely, and in the end, a handful of bankers are identified as key players in the Money Trust's operations, including Paul Warburg, Benjamin Strong Jr., and J.P. Morgan. Andrew Gavin Marshall, editor of The People's Book Project, explains:
"At the beginning of the 20th century, there was an investigation following the greatest of these financial panics, which was in 1907. And this investigation was on what was called the Money Trust, which found that three banking interests, J.P. Morgan, National Citibank, and the Citibank of New York, I believe it was, basically controlled the entire financial system. So, three banks. And the public hatred towards these institutions was unprecedented. There was an overwhelming consensus in the country for establishing a central bank. But there were many different interests in pushing this, and everyone had sort of their own specific purpose behind advocating for a central bank. So, to represent the most people, you had farmer interests, populists, progressives, who were advocating a central bank because they couldn't take the recurring panics. But they wanted government control of a central bank. They wanted it to be exclusively under the public control because they despised and feared the New York banks as wielding too much influence. So for them, a central bank would be a way to curb the power of these private financial interests. On the other hand, those same financial interests were advocating for a central bank to serve as a source of stability for their control of the system, also to act as a lender of last resort to them, and so that they would never have to face collapse. But also, in order to exert more control through a central bank, the private New York banking community wanted a central bank under the exclusive control of them. There's a shocker. So you had all these various different interests which converged. Of course, the most influential happened to be the New York Financial Houses, which were more aligned with European financial houses than they were with any other element in American society. The main individual behind the founding of the Federal Reserve was Paul Warburg, who was a partner with Kuhn, Loeb &amp; Company, European banking house. His brothers were prominent bankers in Germany at that time, and he had, of course, close connections with every major financial and really big industrial firm in the United States and most of those existing in Europe. And he was discussing all these ideas with his fellow compatriots in advocating for a central bank. In 1910, Warburg got the support of a senator named Senator Aldrich, who later, whose family later married into the Rockefeller family. Again, I'm sure just a coincidence, but Aldrich invited Warburg and a number of other bankers to a private, secret meeting on Jekyll Island, just off the coast of Georgia, where they met in 1910, to discuss the construction of a central bank in the United States, but one which, of course, would be owned and serve the interests of the private bankers. Aldrich then, in 1811, presented this as the Aldrich Plan or the Aldrich Bill in the U.S. Congress, and it was actually voted out."
The public, suspicious of Senator Aldrich's banking connections, ultimately reject the Jekyll Island cabal's Aldrich Plan. The cabal does not give up, however. They simply revise and rename their plan, giving it a new public face: that of Senator Robert Owen and Representative Carter Glass. In the end, the Money Trust that was behind the Panic of 1907 uses the public's own outrage against them to complete their consolidation of control over the banking system. The newly-retitled Federal Reserve Act is signed into law on December 23, 1913, and the Fed begins operations the next year.